Good evening. I would like to call this June 23 meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee together to order, together, we're together too, I guess. All right, let's stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We will start with introduction. Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Bonacco, Millville.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Oh, we'd like separated by continent. Hi, Tim.
Hi, I'm Tim Howell from Blackstone.
Carrie Godette, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Matt Aaronworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Okay, we had a few warrants that are working their way around to be signed and minutes from the June 10 meeting, I believe were sent to us for the meeting. And so I will entertain a motion to approve them as Consent Agenda A.
So moved?
Moved by Erin.
Second.
Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Consent Agenda A is approved and since we have no public, I'll assume there's no public vote. And we will move right to Mr. Aaronworth.
Well, thank you very much. For this evening, I will begin my reports with the update on the FY21 preliminary projection. You should have in your package a document labeled General Fund Preliminary Projection. I labeled this as such because, excuse me, as we talk about E&amp;D, which we typically do, coming towards the end of the year, and then as we get into the beginning of next year when E&amp;D will hopefully get certified as quickly as possible, when the Department of Revenue actually only looks at our general fund budget for both revenues and expenditures. So I laid this sheet out and I'll walk through it to indicate where things stand currently with our general fund. So if you look at the top left of the document, does everyone have the document? Just want to make sure. If you look at the top left of the document, you'll see E&amp;D listed, our beginning balance was certified for FY20 at, yes, FY20 at $411,257. We applied $140,000 of it to the FY22 budget, which leaves an ending balance of $271,257. A question will come up, what about some of the other E&amp;D expenses that we've discussed and/or approved? The budgeted number is up there because that actually is not an expense yet. Any other E&amp;D expenses that were approved do show up in the general fund expenditures. So those numbers are part of the calculation, but because that application to the FY22 budget is not actual expense, it's not shown elsewhere. So that leaves us with that ending balance of $271,000. I then walk through the general fund income that we've demonstrated to date. You can see what was budgeted. And again, the Department of Revenue only looks at the listed revenues as general fund, our operating assessments, capital assessments, Chapter 70, transportation, charter school tuition, Medicaid, the interest that we gain, and our E&amp;D that we apply. You can see that E&amp;D, that $467, is what we applied to the FY21 budget. So we had budgeted from the general fund a revenue of $25,178,714, and we're showing as of now an actual revenue of $25,536,599. The bulk of that, as you can see, is in that Chapter 70. We originally budgeted to have a shortfall, which is why we added the additional E&amp;D of about $300,000, and we ended up getting about $248,000 more than we budgeted for. So again, that brings to the total variance for income of $357,000, approximately $358,000. To the right of that, you'll see the general fund expenses. The number that's going to seem very familiar to you is the blue column, that's the blue row, sorry, that says Total District Expense. That's that $25,169,827 that we see at the bottom of all of my expenditure reports. The other numbers are not part of that expenditure report, though they're part of the general fund expenses. The charter school expenses and the school choice expense come right out of our Chapter 70 money, so I don't calculate it in our expense sheet, and we have no control over that. And the other expense is the capital expense, which is a separate budget for us, and we typically always receive the money that we plan on getting and we expend exactly what we said. It's a very clear fixed cost with no fluctuations on mortgages or anything of that nature. So you can see that the total expense then comes out to the $26,874,414. That's our total expenses. I then backed out the additional funds that you see listed to the right and the application of the school choice revenue. So when we put our budget together, once again, we show all of the income, which includes every one of those grants, every one of those additional revenues for the district, and our school choice revenue. I list it as such to show you that for the purposes of DOR, our budgeted income matches our budgeted revenue from the general fund. That's one of the first things that they check. Then, below that general fund expense that's budgeted, you will see our actual general fund expenditures to date. You'll see the encumbered and the expended in those two colored rows, and then I've added the charter and choice back in to those expenses and the capital expense, which brings us to that total of $24,971. If we take that $25,178,714 and remove the $24,971, you'll see we have a total remaining of unexpended, unencumbered of $207,358. So if you go back to the left side of the sheet, there's three numbers. There's the ending balance of the E&amp;D, which is that $271,257. You have the variance or the additional income that we expect to see, which is the $357,885. And then you have what we didn't spend that we budgeted to spend, which is our $207,358. And those three numbers added together will bring us to what I am expecting to be, and I want to stress, all of these numbers are still very preliminary. We haven't closed the books. There are still encumbrances that need to be cleared, payments that need to be made. So this is very preliminary. But that leaves us right now at an approximate E&amp;D of $836,000. And that is where I'm expecting us to land for the fiscal year. Are there questions about that?
No, but that was easy to follow and easy to read.
Thank you. I tried to make it clear and organized and large enough to see.
There you go. I appreciate it.
Not the importance not being in that order. Probably primarily large enough to see. That concludes my preliminary projections. I know the next piece on the report is we have a surplus disposal request. That is for the food warmer at the complex. You have in your, in your package, the request to dispose of old equipment. Maureen Gonzalez has asked, they purchased a new food warmer. They have had a significant surplus in the food service account, given all of the meals that we've served and that which we've been reimbursed for. So what Maureen has been doing, very respectfully and doing a wonderful job of, in addition to overseeing all of the food programs, making sure that we have the equipment that we need, and as we can, replacing the equipment and updating it so that we're prepared for the future. So she has purchased this new food warmer and she would like to dispose of the old one, which has absolutely no functional use, and it's trash.
I will entertain a motion to toss a food warmer. Moved by Tara, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, toss away. But I do, I'll take a moment while we're here to, again, thank the food service staff. I know they're going to be working through the summer as they did last summer, feeding, and I hope people are aware of the schedule for pickup. I believe it's at this school, at the middle school, on Wednesdays, I think two times, afternoon and, or lunchtime and afternoon time. But I do hope people will take advantage of that. I know last summer it was tremendously successful, so I'm hoping it will be again, because that is one thing people should not have to worry about.
I can say we've already been receiving requests from families in the community and we've been responding with the information. So I think it'll be a tremendous help and service.
We already put a nice post out on social media yesterday to clarify ages, who's eligible.
Yeah, it does not, your child does not have to be a student in this district. They just have to be zero to, what are they, 21?
Zero to 21.
Okay, sorry, Matt?
No, not at all. The next report on my docket is the facilities report. You have a document labeled Facilities/Projects Update. Many of these are not yet underway, but I'll just walk through them. So we have the baseball softball field project. We are expecting that there's going to be about a 10 to 12 week lead time on the materials for that project. The plan is to have a company working outside through September into October and to have the project completed by the end of October and the field's ready to go for spring.
Matt, does that include, like, temporary fencing or something? Because my fear is they're going to be working on a field in October and then there's going to be a bonfire, October 31st and, you know, kind of, so like, are they going to block off so nobody can?
We can, we can make sure that there is temporary fencing in those areas.
They moved the fire up top last, last couple of times too, I think. It wasn't down.
But that's something that I can also put into our work.
Because actually football will be probably out there too, so it should be fenced.
It should be fenced so that nobody goes where we don't spend thousands and then, yep.
Yeah, I believe, that is part of the plan, but I will certainly make sure that that's confirmed. With respect to both the tennis courts and the track area, and I want to be clear, the track area is not undergoing a complete resurfacing. That was a tremendous undertaking. But we are looking to do patching on some of the larger areas where there's some damage. And the tennis courts would be a complete resurfacing or filling of the cracks, re-coating, and then the lines being put back on. That's about, they're booking eight to 10 weeks out still. They can't get to the, to the project. And they're expecting that it won't be a long project, so it should be completed by the beginning of September.
Is it the same company doing both?
We're hoping to have the same company do both. We've spoken to a number of companies. They are all running that eight to 10 weeks out based on the season and people putting in requests.
Who are you, who are you looking at to do the work in particular?
I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can, I can get you some.
That's fine, just a mini email.
Sure. I can, I can get you some of the information on that. Regarding the high school security system, which we discussed, that is going to start, hopefully, next week, and it should be about two to three weeks' worth of work, according to Omega Alarm. And we're hoping to have that finished at the latest by the end of July. And we have engaged a designer to do the complex and MES safety vestibules. They're currently drawing up the architectural designs so that we can have any of the plans approved by the building inspectors in each town. But we have estimated costs, actually, we have quotes for the costs, and they're ordering the materials, but there's a six to eight week lead time on the actual hardware for the doors and the frames. I did give them the go-ahead just the other day, so we tried to get as, as quick of a jump start as possible. We are hoping that that will be completed prior to the end of August, but I have, we've worked with this contractor before and they did the high school vestibule, so if, and some other door work. But if needed and it runs into the school year, they've assured me that they would be able to do it after school hours and that they would leave the area in a condition where it would be fine for students to go through.
How did you know that? That was my question.
It would be a very rational question. And the last piece is the safety laminate, as discussed, to coat the windows. There's a three to four week order time, and we are anticipating that all of the existing vestibules that we had quotes on already should be completed by the end of July. That's if the suppliers are able to get the materials in in that timeframe. That's what's expected at this point, but there was a backlog before. I've been told it should be three to four weeks. If not, I wouldn't expect that, that would run much further than into, like, slightly into August. The one delay would be just the new vestibules that are being constructed. Bless you.
Bless you.
We do want to make sure that we're adding the safety film to the newly constructed vestibule areas as well, so we'll get a formal quote as soon as the architectural designs are done, and then we'll get the stuff ordered. And hopefully, as soon as the, as soon as the vestibules are built, the, the laminates should be able to be applied. It's a one or two day project maximum.
Question.
Question?
Can I ask quickly about the track area? Beginning of September it should be completed. That won't impact any of the sports that should play up there?
That's the goal.
Okay.
That was the goal. I've discussed the timing of all of the projects with Mr. McEnulty, and, and he's said that these timelines should work. He's been very instrumental in booking these, you know, walkthroughs with these companies, and he and I have been going back and forth with the estimates and the timing of all of these projects that connect to the fields.
Right. I just wasn't sure how early those teams start actual games. Progresses.
Build a bridge over the track.
Yeah.
So if there's, if we're doing any top dressing or whatever, the outfield's, are we putting down a winter rye to, to keep it in place? Because that's, we're going to need to plant something to keep grass growing there so that when the spring comes around, we can reseed it and get a spring/summer grass growing.
Sure. I can discuss that with the groundskeeper that we're looking to hire. We have interviews set up, but I'll talk about that at another point. But it's definitely something that I'll note and make sure that we do take care of. Other questions for the facilities project?
Good information.
Yeah, thank you. It's good stuff.
There are nobody, yeah, there you go.
It's really good stuff.
Yeah, good. All right.
And the last piece is the facilities request report. Facilities request, it's not really a report. Which you have in your package. So there is an application for use of school facilities from the French River Education Center.
Yeah, okay.
They do that every year.
We can do that one first, because I understood that one.
They do this every year.
Yeah, I was going to say, and they usually, yeah.
They use it at a library.
Yeah.
And if there's basketball or something, it doesn't matter, it won't impact space.
Yeah, no, they do it in here, so it works out, it usually works out pretty well.
Yeah. And we don't have jump start back then anyway. You have a yes, why, but.
Right.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for French River. Okay, moved by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next one.
This was kind of a strange one. We had a request to use our parking lot. We have a family that recently moved into Mendenham Street, and they're having a gathering on July 24th, it's a Saturday, and they requested to use the parking lot for their friends and family who are going to be joining their gathering.
But we think they just want people to be able to park there?
Yeah, yes. Catherine had a conversation with the gentleman that is organizing the event, and he said they just, he didn't want to just have people park there and not ask, and said that it's just a matter of having them have a place to park.
We've had, you're sure this is not the Daniel Farmstead family? Because they, they, they do like this reenactment usually every year, and they have a shuttle running from our parking lot.
So that does not sound familiar?
It doesn't sound like that with all the 20.
Yeah, he, he had said it was, I think it's a housewarming.
Okay.
We did not get invitations, but I believe they just moved in.
If we get invited, you know, I mean, I, if there's, if there's, as long as they understand that there could be soccer, there could be baseball, I mean, there just could be stuff going on.
It doesn't make us liable for the vehicles in the parking lot, right?
Yeah, I mean, no.
No.
So.
Because it was just a courtesy, otherwise.
Yeah, they probably just park there.
Regardless, right?
Right. And there's a $50 space fee to use the space.
Okay.
That's what the parameters are set.
They didn't ask for it to be waived.
Well, they didn't ask for it to be waived.
Nope, he did not ask for that to be waived.
Okay. Okay, moved by Erin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstention? All right, the ayes have it.
Park.
Okay. Thank you. Have personnel update as well.
Yes, please.
For an update on the district's social worker, leave that to Ms. Gillerani.
Come on down.
Come on.
Yeah.
A long walk for a short update.
Short speech. We know we approved the district's social worker. We had a committee that came together, I think, yes, we came together on several occasions, but for two groups of individuals. So for our first round, we actually thought we found the right fit, didn't quite work out, so we regrouped, we reposted, we identified candidates and reached out with no word back. So we are still working at it. We're coming up with, you know, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, so we are working on that. But in the interim, what we did ask principals to do, so it'd be pair, ready to go, once this person came on board, we asked principals to identify all of those families and those kiddos who would be kind of like those tier three. So when we do bring that person on board, we're ready to hit the ground running. Yeah, so we're still in the process. It's been a process, but yeah, so we're continuing to post and, like I said, come up with alternatives. Because either way, we have a need and we want to be able to fill it.
Not for lack of trying. I appreciate the effort you have put into this.
We have, but we've, like I said, we've met twice as a, two different rounds of individuals as a group to try to identify those, weed through everything, and yeah, so we're still looking, we're still working on it.
Any questions for Jill?
Do you think there's something we're missing? Is it based, job description, salary, anything?
I don't think so. I think we're pretty clear with our expectation for this position.
I think we're clear. I think people who work in social work in schools tend to do it on a school basis and not a district basis. And so I think the overarching position might be overwhelming to some, and perhaps some of the more entry level who, you know, would be good in a school-based aren't really what we're looking for, for the, you know, overall. But we certainly don't have the funds to have one social worker in every school. And I, you know, I think as other, I think we're ahead of the curve on this for a lot of districts. I think you'll, as students return to school, I think you'll see more schools trying to look for stuff.
Reacting to.
Like this. So I think, I think the market will come, I just don't think it's there, you know, I just think.
And I think we don't want to piecemeal it, like, that's, we were looking for someone to oversee.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? It really be broad, and we were really looking for that, that individual who had a lot of the experience, had a lot of experience, but also had that outside of school experience to be able to bring that to us. So like Jane said, we did have candidates who had some, we could see would be great candidates for like an in-school role, not a lot of experience yet, but I do think, I mean, our job description, I don't think there could be any misinterpretation, it's very clear, but I think it's kind of new, you know, a kind of position, so, but we are still working at it.
And do you feel our salary is, it's attractive enough to fit the job description?
I think so.
Because they may also, as you're seeing, school-based, they may be seeing that 12-month position after, you know, and thinking maybe it doesn't line up or, because it would probably usually be a unit and a.
Yeah, I think because of the, this is, this is really outside of the realm of, you know what I mean, the current social workers, the current guidance counselors, so, but I don't think that's been the significant issue, even when we found our initial candidate, it was more of the, we're looking for something more. We're looking for, you know, to join our central office team to be able to help support that area, so. But like I said, we are working on Plan B, C, and D.
That's right. The person's out there.
Always have those there.
The person is out there.
Yeah, but the goal of hiring a person for that, it's, it's still, you know, it's still a goal.
Any other questions about that?
Great, good questions.
Thanks.
So with respect to the facilities director position, it has been posted. We have been receiving quite a number of applications, been reviewing the applications, and we are scheduling interviews for early next week, and the hope is to have somebody selected and starting within the first week, potentially second week of July. The groundskeeper position, given the need for all of the work that we have and some of these specific grounds projects, even though the facilities director will oversee those as well, I think the groundskeeper will be pretty heavily involved in some of the, you know, the field development work. So we have gotten a number of resumes and we are scheduling interviews for Friday, and hopefully we will either make an offer or start looking back at the resumes the following week. But our hope is to have someone in that position, I'd like to have someone there prior to July 1st, or at the start for July 1st.
Start July 1st.
For a start of July 1st. Depending on their, depending on whether or not they have to give, you know, how much notice.
But do we have the funds to start them in FY20, whatever this one is, 21?
Well, it would be July, I would do a July 1st start.
Yeah, okay. I'm excited to hear there were lots of applicants personally.
Yes.
I think that's great.
I'm, I'm excited by the applicants, they seem to have, especially for the facilities director position, there seem to be a number of qualified people.
Great.
It's good news.
And we have, paperwork is a bit out. We have a wage request. We have a new document, again, from Ms. Gonzalez requesting, she says, "I am writing to ask that the pay for substitute workers in the kitchen be raised from the current $12 per hour to $14 per hour." "While I know we are not subject to the minimum wage, which is $13.50 per hour, we feel that our workers, including our subs, should be paid a wage that is fair, and the nutrition department uses subs sparingly." And this adds $2, this extra $2 per hour will not amount to a large sum of money. It's worth noting as well, all of these funds come directly from the food service fund slash budget, which is disconnected entirely from the general fund, so.
We'll entertain a motion to increase the salary.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, one of the tie. Moved by Tim and seconded by, that one to Aaron. Does anybody have any discussion on the increase? I think it's a great idea.
Are they six-hour employees? Will they come in, or do they come in later?
It would vary depending on which position they're filling in for.
Most are shorter, I thought.
Most are, most are shorter, but I can't say definitively like that they wouldn't hit six hours.
I just want to make sure we're paying all of our substitutes a competitive wage. So I don't know where this puts them at a six-hour day compared to our classroom subs, but probably something else we should look out to. I.
What is our rate?
It's a little embarrassing that we pay under minimum wage.
Well, we raised it for COVID, but, yeah.
Did we go up to 100 or no?
Yeah, we did.
Did we, did we raise the sub?
We did.
We did.
Was it 80 prior to that?
It was 75.
So we put the six-hour cafeteria at $98 a day, right?
No, it was 84.
I'm terrible with math.
84?
Yeah, 84. Oh, I was going seven hours.
Eighty-four, yes.
Which I think we pay 80.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
I'm not even saying that's enough. I just want to make sure we're keeping them.
That's a great point, Erin, yep.
And if there are no other questions, please indulge me. So concludes my reports prior to 7:00.
Oh, wait, we didn't vote.
You didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
Ah, Missy, I'm in such a rock.
Jeez, you're so excited to go first now.
I am.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstention? All right, that can conclude your report.
That concludes my report prior to 7:00 PM.
For the first time ever.
Okay, but now where's the popcorn?
All right.
There's some popcorn.
So good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Nice to see all of you, as always. Just two items on my report this evening, just two. Just a real quick update on the elementary school reorganization. Just, so the committee in the community has a sense, we are on target for all of our timelines as far as moving classrooms next week and making sure that the road project is happening at the rate that it needs to move. Transportation schedules being reviewed, looked at, class lists are finished. I mean, really, it's, the team has done, Matt and Tellstones, the principals, the staff, everybody's done a really nice job of making sure that we're right on track with, with the work that needs to happen. Even down to the principals going over and meeting the students in the different buildings and having the virtual meetings with kids, and so it's just, it's, it's nice. It's been a really nice transition, so. There will inevitably be bumps, but wanted to make sure to touch on it this evening, that so far, so good, and our timelines are being met as planned. Yes, please.
You say class lists. Any chance the kids will, like, when we know, when they'll know, teachers, or?
I think they do it, yeah, I think they do it right at, like, right before the beginning of the year, yeah.
They used to way back, get it, the last day of school, but.
I think Millville Day and Blackstone didn't.
Yeah.
It used to be on their report card.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
I would, I would just say, if we, if there's any way to get it out sooner, just because there's a change for a lot of kids, new buildings, new teachers, new kids in the class, just to ease that anxiety, if, if they're done, I don't, I think it might put some old.
Yeah, absolutely. And I was just gonna throw in there, we had a quick meeting with the new elementary PTO. And we were talking about trying to do like some kind of a back-to-school social, like, probably that week.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, obviously, we'll run it by you guys before you and the principals, before any final decisions, but I think, same, like Erin's saying, if you know your classroom, that would be, I mean, that's the week I'm in.
And especially the older, so the kids going over to AFM, I mean, even though, just having that sense of what they're walking into is.
Oh, and for some, it'll be the first time they've been back in the classroom in a while.
Right.
Well, hopefully, they'll be in the August summer program.
I hope so, yes, fingers crossed. That's right. Yeah, we hope that our, our full remote students will come and join our Acceleration Academy, should that get approved from the department, but we put the grant in last week. So hopefully, that gets approved, and we can have all of our remote learners back the week before, or at least get them out before we start the school year. I'll keep, definitely keep the school committee apprised of that, and I think that's a great point of looking at those lists before the barbecue, which is, or picnic, which is great. I think that's such a great idea. Love to do that and be part of that. So the next item is, we are at that time of the year. It's a wonderful time of year. Is that that Christmas song or something, the holiday song? It's most wonderful time. So this evening, I have to present to the school committee and to our school community my end-of-cycle evaluation. And I guess a couple of things before I jump into the evidence to talk through with everyone. I really do want to open with just a very sincere thank you to everyone at this table, and those of our school community members who are not able to join us this evening. Also, a big thank you to our leadership team, to our teachers and our support staff, and to their leadership. Our formal, you know, union leadership at every level. The amount of work that went into really pushing towards making sure that as much in-person everything that could safely happen was happening took a, a lot of time, effort, and energy, and I know the school committee knows that for sure, because you're all part of it. But to really make sure that the conditions were set so that we could not only, you know, do school, but we could actually keep our improvement work running, which is what we're gonna talk a little bit about this evening. But I'm really humbled by the work that everybody across our school system put into this. And I will also say, I mentioned it at our senior awards night, and I said it at the fifth grade graduation ceremony. I don't think that our families and our students got enough credit either. You know, through the pandemic, we heard so much about first responders and frontline workers and essential workers, and all those folks are absolute heroes, without question. I would never say anything but that. But I do think in that mix somewhere are, are students that had to learn to do things really different. And by the way, with little to almost no complaints at all, the kids really just kind of went with the flow. And the families that had to and did most, you know, getting behind the changes. This was really hard. This is a really difficult experience, and I certainly don't need to underscore that for all of you around the table. You know that. There was no good decision. It was what's the best of the most challenging decisions to make. And so I just want to just really thank the community and everybody that really had their hands in trying to make this work the best we could. Because it, it was, you know, really difficult, frankly, 15 months or however long it's been to this point. But I don't want the students to get lost in that. Because, you know, this is, this was their, this was their year, and they don't, you know, they don't get a redo. And so, you know, I'm just really proud of the, of the community, really proud of, of our students, really proud of our teachers and our support staff, their leadership, our leadership. The school committee has been incredible. And, you know, just when we thought we had it all in control, it changed. And just when we thought we had that figured out, it changed. And so I, you know, I'm very appreciative of, of everybody working through this together. Because I do think, I really do think that we did the best we could. If I had to look back and say, I would do this different, that different, this different, that different, there's really not a lot I would say that we should have done differently. There's not. We, we didn't hit a lot of snags at a lot of other places hit, and it was because of this just constant collaboration, communication. You know, and we debated, lord, did we debate, you know, the gators and the masks and the six-feet, three-feet, quarantining, don't quarantine, football, soccer, hockey, I mean, it was basketball, I mean. But that's, that's what makes it work, I think, right? And at the end of the day, we just kept coming back to our goals, which were, how do we get as much for kids and as much normalcy safely that we can in keeping everybody healthy? So, you know, I, we're certainly, you know, not necessarily done with all this kind of stuff yet, I don't think, I'm not sure. But I'm really very proud of everybody that, that was able to help get this work done, and I'm so appreciative. Because there were a lot of people at the table to help make this work. So I just wanted to open with that. And so this evening, as we talk through the, it's, you know, technically my evaluation, but, but I don't see it that way. I really see it as a valuation of our school system. And I think the school committee knows that I am incredibly humbled to be in this seat. You could have anybody doing this, and, you know, I'm, I'm so appreciative that it's me. And I really do love the work that we are doing, and so I want to thank the committee for that opportunity, continued opportunity. But tonight's conversation is really about the work of the district. And while I am leading that work, it's certainly not a one-person show. And so a big shout-out to our leadership team. And I hope their work is seen through this, through this evidence this evening. I do think that it is the role of the superintendent to build up and support every level of the organization. And so I hope what the school committee sees tonight is that that work is in progress and is happening. So a big thank you to our leadership team and to all of you as well, because this is a direct reflection on the work that we have been able to do together. And I do think that when school committees and, and district leadership works collaboratively with that normal, healthy tension, that should be there, frankly. But I do think, like, amazing things can happen, and I think we've done some great work with that. So as far as the actual binders, the evidence binders that you have in front of you this evening are set up, I tried to make them just really kind of direct and connected. So each piece of evidence to each one of the goals. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Erin again, particularly publicly, because painstakingly, she had to go through this with me, draft after draft, from the beginning to the end. So I really appreciate that, and really helped think through even how to, you know, set the evidence up to make sure that this all made sense to everybody. And I certainly do not want to belabor the evidence in front of us tonight. What I thought we could do for our framing is just touch on each goal, and I could just highlight the evidence that's there, and then see if there are questions about that particular goal and the evidence sets connected to that. And my thought was, once we kind of worked through those, we could talk a bit about the student learning and the student achievement, because even that looks different this year, you probably noticed. You have beginning-of-year data and middle-of-year, and then you have middle-of-year and end-of-year. We usually don't have all that laid out the way that we did, but again, it was very intentional to do it that way, because between beginning and middle, we had those three models, and then we brought all the kids back. So I really, really did want to see, like, what kind of happened from beginning, middle, and middle to end. So I know it was double the data sheets to look at, and kind of had to lay one over the other one to figure them all out. But I, I was thinking that it might be a good way to look at kind of the difference, because the, the learning model was, was different for both chunks of that, of the school year with that. And then we could talk a bit about the survey data. So if that's okay with the committee, we can just jump right into, to that. And so I do want to mention our district improvement strategy, because we are actually going to be starting the work this year to develop a revised strategy. We, if you remember, we created a three-year blueprint. We're actually entering year three of that, which is really interesting. So we will be working with Carrie Purcell and her team to help us kind of walk through that new strategic plan or blueprint, and.
Do we get to keep the fidget spinner?
We just may be able to get to, to keep that, yeah. But I'll, but I'll tell you what, people know this, and they, you know, they're like, yeah, yeah, we know the what the hell, the whatever, we get it.
Even though they don't know the district goals according to the survey, but they can spit this out.
They know this thing.
Yep, they do.
So that's helpful.
That is.
And so my sense is, moving forward, we have a lot of communication to, to go back and forth with our school community, but we'll probably see just very much deepened work in these areas. So our little fidget spinner friend is not going away, but wanted to just make sure folks knew that we're working on, we'll be working soon on a new iteration of that. So as you recall, I think it was a year ago, or two, I don't remember at this point, but we looked at piloting that new superintendent evaluation, which really just focuses the work in on a few key standards, and we decided to stick with that. So these are the four standards, in addition to the goals that the school committee is evaluating me against. And so just a reminder to the community, or anyone that's tuning in, the standards are the instructional leadership, management and operations, family, community, and professional culture. And then underneath those sub, like, section A and B, et cetera, those are the indicators. And so they actually, in the rubric that the school committee uses to evaluate me against, they're listed as, you know, 1B1, 1B3. So when you're looking through the evidence, and this is more for our family and friends at home, you'll see this, you know, 1B1, 1B3, 2A3, 2A4, et cetera, listed next to the pieces of evidence that tether back to these standards and indicators. Does that make sense? So again, in my effort to try to make this, you know, as streamlined as possible, we labeled everything. Erin, I think that was your suggestion, so thank you for that. So with that, we can launch right into the first goal, and I, I touched on this a little bit already, but our first goal was really about our professional practice goal around navigating through this interesting school year. And, you know, I want to say that the, the work that we have to discuss this evening really is just a fraction of the work that we actually were able to accomplish. I think one of the things that I'm most proud of, that our school system has been able to do throughout the past 15 months is, our, and I know the committee's heard me say this 100 times, but our work didn't stop. We just figured out a different way to do it. And so with that, you know, I do think that we, we worked very hard to transition from those one learning plan to the next learning plan and try to minimize interruptions, keeping our focus on as much face-to-face time with students. And this bottom piece that is bolded and underlined, you know, this, I mean, these, this was the goal, right? The idea was to have this consistent focus on students' overall health and return as many students back to the classroom as possible. And so when we had questions during the past school year, that, you know, why are you doing this? Why are you, you know, rushing, bringing kids back? Or how come there's not a, a day off in the middle of the week for deep cleaning? No one can still tell me what that means, but, you know, we want a real hybrid schedule. I thought the whole thing was fake, to be honest, like, I didn't know there was a real hybrid schedule, so. You know, when we heard all these things, we just kept bringing everybody back to the goal. Well, this is, like, this is the goal. And so we just kept reanchoring those conversations in, in this area. And I will say, it took a Herculean effort of everybody.
Well, and I, and I will make a comment there, because I think even when you read this, or even when you look at the material, and this is the first, first piece in a very large binder, but it goes back to something you said earlier. This clearly was a team, community effort. You know, we can really see, one of the goals when you started here in this district, and, and when you applied for the job, you said, I need to bring the community together. They need to be a part of this. You know, I'll go to the, wherever, garage party, I think was the example. And to me, this illustrates that. You know, I can't remember any, in my eight years on the committee, any conversation with the Board of Health. You know, for any reason whatsoever, now, nobody could think we'd be in a pandemic, but nonetheless, relationships were built. I think the Boys and Girls Club, like, the partnership that exists there now, and the fact that now Bellingham has tied it, I mean, it's just, we're really using the strengths of the community. And I think if, if there's a highlight. of the community, and I think if, if there's a highlight in, in this report and in these goals, it's that different people have different hands and they're using them. And it's really important, like, it's really a team, and it's really a, you know, interview that Jill was talking about before, there was a representative from the Boys and Girls Club on the search commi-, you know, it's just, people are, are buying in and they're getting in, and I think that's a great testament to your leadership. So I, I think this is really important, what we're doing. But, before I forget, can we get copies, I know we gave summer reading material to the students, can we get a copy of, of each classes, whatever, into both of the libraries in town?
Oh, sure.
Just because that way, you know, we know students, like, get buried in the beach sand or whatever, and just so that, even if we don't have physical copies, the library knows what all those readings are.
Absolutely.
But if we have physical copies, even better.
We can definitely do that.
So I didn't want to forget that, but sorry.
No, thank you. No, I'm glad you mentioned that, I'm making note of it right now. And so with all of that collaboration, I think we've been able to, to safely meet that goal of trying to keep students in classroom, in the classroom as much face-to-face work and extracurricular and athletics as we can. And so on slide, I believe that's five, for the mid-cycle, I had listed all the evidence on the left side, end-of-cycle, I had filled in, you know, here are some other additional components that just show some samples of the work, and then in your binders, they're actually numbered, so you can see the number of each piece of evidence and the subsequent number on the divider that it connects to, so that you're not kind of hunting and pecking for everything. I, I do realize that a lot of the work is just, it's stuff you've already seen, but again, that was intentional so that you didn't have to go back and kind of rifle through packets and emails and that kind of stuff. So we try to do a kind of a one-stop shop. I think one of the things that I, to Jane's point, that I just want to bring forward, the, the Boys and Girls Club partnership this summer, I, I am just continuing, continuously? Is that the right word? I'm continuing to be impressed, I'm not sure how I'm trying to say that, by the team that is there. Bruce and Sarah, you know, we just met again last evening, they're only a couple of days into their program, they had a big rain out yesterday, so, you know, moving 300 kids indoors safely on a, on a, on a good year is tough. And, you know, we discussed with them the shuttle bus of the Boys and Girls Club kids that need to go to the complex for, you know, the middle school students for the summer programming. They're just amazing, in terms of like, "Yep, we can totally do that, give us the dates, the times, we're going to make it work." You know, "That'll help bring some of our numbers down." I mean, they just see the, kind of the, the give and take on both sides, and so great to work with. So we're, you know, just continuing to be really impressed with, with that level of collaboration there. Our staff will start there Monday, so I'll be meeting with the team one more time tomorrow morning to go through, now I finally understand the Boys and Girls Club summer schedule, I haven't ever seen it, but it's really kind of interesting, so like now I actually have my head wrapped around it, they had to talk me through it, so we can figure out how to plug our, our staff in there. And they have, you know, you talk about the clinical work, a list of students that they want to make sure there's some additional clinical supports and counseling in place, and one of our counselors is going to be doing that for them, and there are students, the majority of them. So just a great, great partnership. And our, and our kitchen is feeding the students over there for the summer. So, I mean, it's just seamless, and a lot of our students, our graduates, are actually working there. So it just, you know, and if you remember, our seniors did the day of volunteering and went back and cleaned up and volunteered and painted and got all the, the lawn cleaned up and the leaves, and it's just an awesome community relationship, so we're really grateful for them. The other thing I just wanted to mention too on that, in your packet, we had a, a example of what our CARE, Summer CARE Plans look like, again, kind of a high level, but just gives a quick sense of that, and our updated food service numbers, you know, almost 390,000 meals that we have put out to the community to try to at least take that piece off of their, their plate, no pun intended, but as far as the stress goes with that. So we're really pleased to be able to, and Jane, exactly to your point, like, the goal was always to embed the schools in the community and get the community to wrap themselves around the schools.
Yep.
And that work isn't done.
It's, no, but-
But, and the fact, you know, Matt's walking down the bike path with the Millville librarians talking about, you know, potential partnerships and collaboration, I mean, that's, you know-
That's huge.
I was going to jump in and say, I know they do have a lot of copies of the summer reading books, so-
Okay.
I'm not sure specifically which ones they're missing, but that was part of our conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, we'll double, I will double check.
Yeah, and more, you know, like I said, if not the actual books, more the lists, so-
Yeah, they definitely have the lists, but I, they have physical copies too, so-
Okay, great.
So are there any questions on any of the evidence for professional, for my professional goal?
So, wow.
No? And again, I know a lot of it you've seen multiple times, as far as, you know, COVID information and-
Winter sports.
Winter sports stuff and data dashboard, the data dashboards and all of that, all of that fun, we'll call it. All right. Good. The next goal was focused around our curriculum and instruction work. So when you think about our district blueprint, this is really the what and the how. So it's making sure that we have the right curriculum and the materials and resources in the hands of our staff and students, and then the instructional framework that needs to be, or that is being put in place to help improve student learning. So I won't read all the pieces of evidence to you, but I do think there's a couple of important pieces here to highlight as well. I, I think the first really looks at the literacy training. One of the pieces we put in for evidence was a recent survey that we'd reached out to the elementary teachers and said, "Okay, we're kind of nearing the end of year one, we've had a bunch of, you know, training and coaching on wonders. What doesn't make sense still? What questions do you have?" And so we consolidated all of, and that's actually their feedback to us. So there's a lot there.
There was, there was a lot there. It's consistent, though, they were consistent.
Yep, and so what we have done is now, actually as recent as this morning, I was working with our, our lead trainer from the wonders program, she has all that information, Kristin, she's great. She's solidified the trainer for us already for the August PD Day, and Jenny, myself, and Christina will be meeting with her and her team to craft the professional development and next steps for the teachers based on what they shared with us. And so I just wanted to come back to that, because I don't want the committee to think that this is like a crock pot, we just set it and forget it, and come back when it's ready and it tastes great and it's, you know, smells good and we're good to go. Like, there's a lot of work that still goes into this after we've put the right resources in the hands of the, of the teachers.
So, so the lady from, because I, I, you know, a lot of the comments are, I mean, you can see my notes all over this here, but-
Yes, yeah.
She will design, there'll be, she'll design fall PD or you, if she'll come back with, with suggestions for-
Yes, so what will-
Fall PD, whatever.
So what, your point, Jane, around, like, there's a lot of, like, consistency-
Yeah.
-in the comments, so we are working with them to identify the patterns and trends-
Okay.
-and then design the staff development around that. One of the things that we, I think we do a little bit different here, and we saw some good evidence of it today, we had a leadership retreat, first of our three-day retreat was today, the next two days are in August, but working around some of our equity and diversity work, like, we don't just farm it out, right? Like, we actually will, the folks that we're working with, like Carrie Purcell or, like, we'll, we sit down with them and design it with them, so that it's customized for what we need. We don't do the, here's just the packaged canned training and we're going to implement it. Actually, we do very little training outside of our system with, like, a consultant, most of it we do in-house with our own staff, ourselves, but there are some things that, you know, we're just not experts on the fundamentals behind why wonders laid out their phonemic awareness and phonics program the way they did. So we actually had to, like, confer with them multiple times during the year to say, like, "All right, we're kind of freaking out, how come our kindergartners are at, you know, the long vowel sounds in February when they should be through that?" So I mean, we're, like, we're in that deep-
Yeah.
... with, with the work. Does that answer your question, Jane, about-
Yeah, it does, and it's clearly a program that has so much that hopefully, you know, teachers who are really into it will spend some time answering their own questions this summer and, you know, into the fall.
We need to do a better job of the must-dos and can-dos, like, here are the things that you have to do, because you can see that, like-
You can see that.
The teachers aren't sure, like, "Well, do I, like, do I do all this? Can I leave some of this out? Which parts do I need to prioritize?" There's just, in a comprehensive program like this, a lot-
Well, and we talked about trying to be consistent K to 12, so if you're focused, if you decide this is important and you decide that's important, we're not, we're no longer consistent, so-
And the upper, the, like, the middle and high school teachers, you will see grapple less with that-
Right.
-because the, the assumption is that kids aren't learning how to read now, they're just learning from their reading, so they're focused really on the reading strands and the writing strands, and that's just, yeah, it's content, it's just different than actually fluency, phonics, phonemic awareness, morphemes, all of that, like, it's just, yeah, it's just different.
Okay.
Were there any questions on?
Wait a minute.
The last bullet was something that, as a matter of fact, we just did another round of this today, but we believe as a leadership team that feedback on instruction is one of the most important things that we do, and so we spent a nice chunk of our morning, we observed a common lesson, it was an eighth-grade algebra, algebra lesson, pre-algebra lesson-
Yep.
-on slope.
Yeah.
And it was great, we did role-playing, so we all watched the same lesson, we had a teacher and an administrator, and we used the process we used, and they each took 10 minutes being the teacher and being the administrator, and then they swapped. I had the opportunity to circulate, and I took a ton of notes on what I heard and what I noticed, and then we debriefed as a full leadership team, which includes the coaches, on, on that work. So we looked at, like, you know, it's interesting, some of you focus on content of the actual, Matt, of the actual material itself, and they're like, "Wow, she actually taught slope wrong." You know, which is a whole nother issue. Some folks really looked at process and, like, lesson sequencing. Some people got really deep into instructional strategies. So we had the conversation around, like, "Okay, now be the teacher. You've got a principal, an assistant, and a coach working with you, and each one's looking at something different." And it's like, you, you, you can't, you've got to calibrate and align the work so that we're supporting the teacher the best way we can. So even to, like, that depth, we're still very much focused on that work.
So talk about, what is the SLICE?
Yeah. So one of the things that we have done, I think, well, is created the space for what we call the PLCs, professional learning communities, and those are formal meeting times with the coach and the teachers, and part of that work is student work analysis. So they, you know, take a cross-section of student work, they're looking at it through a particular lens, and they unpack the actual work to try to get a sense of what the students are doing well and where they're struggling, then they use that to inform their, their next steps around their teaching. And so the SLICE is one protocol that they have used during our professional learning community meeting times, our PLCs, to do just that work. What I will say is, we're not doing enough of that. So while we've created the space-
That's interesting, yeah.
-we're not, we're not utilizing those tools enough.
Because it was at this point, when I was reading through the masterpiece, that I, that I really start to saw, to see, saw, I really started to see that, that vision of, like, having the leaders become leaders, having the leaders train new leaders, having those-
Yes.
-leaders train, you know, I really saw that coming to fruition, like, this is really, other people are taking on the work. If we had seen this a year, two years ago, or even a year ago, this would have been your work, like, your work and your work and your work.
You're right.
And so to me, this is where I got really excited to see, but I didn't understand what it meant, but it's okay, I'm not, I'm not in that field, but I really started to see other people taking the lead, other people taking responsibility-
Yes, yep.
-and owning it, and that to me was like, that was the, the best evidence, I guess.
And those are, so when we talk about, if you go back to the, the goal around, like, the instructional, like, infrastructure, or, you know, the instructional framework, instructional space for this improvement work to happen, that's exactly what we're talking about. So when we talked a couple of years ago, if you remember, about having instructional leadership teams and instructional focus, two to three best practices, data cycles, I mean, these are all things we've been talking about for a few years. We don't, you talk about a graduate release, I don't, I don't even go to those, I mean, that's, I have nothing, I mean, at this point, the coaches facilitate them, the teachers do incredible work, bringing the student work to the meetings, looking at the data, and helping to talk about, like, the so what, now what, as Carrie would say, of the, of the student, of the student work. So, you know, the, the staff should feel really good-
Yeah.
-about having created the space for this work. Now, we need to get better at the work that's happening in the space. So we've, you know, we've kind of set the table, now we got to sit, you know, we got to sit down and eat, so to speak.
Anyone else? I'm chatting a lot. Okay.
And then the only other piece that, that was in there that I included was, I wanted to show the committee at a higher level the data meetings we do have, because we do, Matt, Jill, myself, we meet with the principal, the instructional coach, the assistant principal, if there is one in the building, a couple of instructional leadership team members, and we actually look at the beginning of year, middle, and next week, next week, the week after, we have the end-of-year data meetings with each principal, and we talk, as we lay out our summer priorities, but, so I wanted to just show, and those are just minutes, I mean, that's just real-time work, redacted significantly for a lot of reasons, but I, you know, wanted you to be able to see, like, these are the, like, this is the real work-
Discussions, right, yeah.
-these are the conversations that are happening-
Yeah.
-that people don't necessarily know about, that's leading to school improvement. Our next goal around district improvement was anchored in equity. I will say that this has been quite a journey for me specifically, leading this work, not only as the superintendent here, but as a superintendent that sits on the state diversity, equity, inclusion task force, that have been charged with helping all of the school systems across Massachusetts, all 351, adequately, I'm not sure adequately is the right word, by the way, but appropriately addressing that all means all. And I think the committee knows that, that is just one of my core values, there's not a student or a child that is not important in this school system, or in any school system, frankly. And so regardless of the successes and the challenges, we have to work as hard as humanly possible to meet the needs of every student, whether it's an acceleration need, or it's a, we got to fill some gaps, you know, kind of need, or anything in between. This is obviously, you know, I think I should just kind of call it out, it's a lightning rod topic in a lot of ways, but I think it's when we talk about equity from a racial and ethnicity perspective, and that is definitely part of this, but we also talk about equity from a learning advantage, we talk about equity from a gender advantage, we talk about equity from an ELL or special, I mean, it, you know, equity is equity at the end of the day. And so I do want to make sure that the community and our school committee, I know that you all know that from my perspective, but I want to make sure the community understands that, that, you know, there's a big focus on racial equity and diversity, and I, and there should be, by the way, I'm not, I'm not pushing back on that, but I do want, you know, the community to understand that, from our perspective, all means all, and, and again, as recent as today, we, we did some very deep work in this area. As far as the evidence is concerned, the, you know, there are a couple of new pieces that I, that I wanted to kind of share, and I want to share out the fact that I, I understand that some of the evidence might have been, maybe, I don't know, maybe intense is the right word, I'm not sure-
That's good.
-or direct, but these are really serious issues that need a lot of, kind of rolling up the sleeves and a lot of hard work. And so, again, I won't belabor the point of all the evidence that's there, but I will say, I think the work that we're doing in our district, I know the work that we are doing in our district is being used as a model in some aspects, because I will be presenting in two weeks at our state superintendent conference, specifically around the work we are doing in BMR, myself and the superintendent from Lynn Public Schools, and you couldn't pick two more different school systems, they have 15,000 kids, we have 1,500 kids. You know, they're 80, 85%, you know, students of color, we're about 85% white. They're 100% free and reduced lunch, we're about 40%. So I mean, you, you, you know, you've- So I mean, you, you know, you've got a huge difference. But the work that's happening in both systems is really customized to the system. And I think that that's important to highlight. So I'm really excited. As a matter of fact, we've been asked to present our, our panel, Patrick and I, twice, so that people will have an opportunity on both days, so they don't have to miss that particular piece. And it's being facilitated ironically by the superintendent in New Bedford, which is just kind of interesting. Both gentlemen are African-American, and it's, you know, it's going to be, I think, a really deep and rich conversation. I put the PowerPoint, just a draft of it in there that I'll be using in mid-July. But the other piece, I think that's really important to mention, are the survey results, which I know we'll talk about after, but, you know, we wanted to get a sense of where families and students and staff see this level of work.
So I, I made a note to myself, and this is not reflective of your evaluation, so I won't belabor it too much. I was very emotional reading this section, because it takes quite the individual to put this stuff out there and be willing to even start the conversations. And as a school committee, I would like us to better support that, not necessarily in our own community. I think we've taken the efforts that we can take and have been asked to take and needed to take as we've gone through the process and, and will continue to. But I think as you're leading other districts through this, particularly the Valley, we can lead other school committees, because I know that superintendents are not getting the support from their school committees that perhaps we're giving you here. And so as we go to MASC meetings, I know there's a summer institute, I know there'll be the fall, but as we do that and we talk to colleagues of ours, I think it's important for us to, to echo that and even make one of our goals, you know, in the summer, some point, probably August, we'll be setting our goals for next year and, and really look to that as one of ours. Because this is, is not the easy work, but this is the real necessary work. So I applaud your efforts in doing it, but I, I challenge us to support it even more strongly than we already do.
Yeah, and one of the things that, and I had provided this as evidence for you to be able to review, is also the framework that the superintendent organization has been working to put together. And that's important, because that really does kind of lay out the roadmap of how. And one of the things that we have been discussing as a larger group, it is now kind of a subcommittee, I'm not on this one, I'm on the professional development one with superintendents, but is partners. Because being out in front on this work by yourself is terrifying to people. And I, and I get it, because I'm not out in front by myself on this work, as Jane, as you just said. So, you know, I, I, I think that partner piece is really critical, really critical. Any specific questions or thoughts around any of this evidence? Our fiscal management goal. So this has been an interesting year, as far as that is concerned, because of all of the S R 1, S R 2, S R 3, the whole budget process, what's in, what's out, what can we move here, what can we move there? But also setting the long-term trajectory, which Matt and I are already working on, of tracking all of this and making sure that we know, you know, what's in S R 1, 2, 3, what do we pull out of S R 2 and S R 3 to put in local over the subsequent years, what do we do with the resources that are freed up there, what are the positions we want to replace, you know, add to local the ones versus the ones we don't. So I share all that to just say, like, you know, this, this work was more like operational, is probably the right way to say it, but moving forward, it's, it, it remains to be very strategic work. We, you know, we, we said to the school committee in multiple workshops and conversations, and then frankly, to the boards of selectmen in both towns, that some of the positions that we have, particularly in S R 2, they're not meant to be forever positions, right? We shouldn't have to hang on to all these interventionists for, you know, more than a couple of years, we hope, to kind of close those gaps. And so, you know, we stand by that. And so Matt and I have already had very deep discussions about the tracking and monitoring of that, charging things to certain S R lines that Matt's already, frankly, he's already set up accounts for, and have already sent those accounts out to our leadership team and administrative support staff. And so I, you know, I think it's interesting, because, you know, we are, certainly, we hope, on the other side of this COVID stuff, but you're going to see these S R lines sticking around for a while. And you're going to hear this continue to come up in the next few budget cycles, because we're going to start moving things out, so that it isn't this big, we're at the end of the line and, you know, we haven't funded anything locally. And I know that's a priority of the committee, as we've talked about.
I, I can chime in and just say, I'm sure everyone on this committee recalls, toward the beginning of this pandemic, it was almost in a reactive mode.
Yeah.
To try to keep up on top of all of the current changes. And it definitely, as Dr. DeFalco has mentioned, has shifted from being reactive to a strategic plan that we have been able to put into place. We've shown the plans for the academic remediation, social, emotional, and all of the supports that we want to sustain for the next three years. And from a financial perspective, that's already laid out. And we'll continue potentially to adjust them as funds come in and expenses change, but it is very strategic, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned.
And so here, the evidence is pretty, you know, self-explanatory, just around the approved budget, which we were very proud of, in working with the towns through that process. I know it wasn't easy, but that's okay, nothing worth it ever is, our S R plans. I really want to bring attention to, to our full list of approved grants. We just applied for another one last week, $43,000 for an Acceleration Academy. We are really hopeful that we will get that, to do that jumpstart work with the kids just the week before school starts, so we talked a little bit about that. But we're, you know, shy of just under $1 million. And, and all of that money are, is going to additional programs for kids, and that is awesome, in terms of trying to expand opportunities. You know, we've, we've been talking for a couple of years, this idea of like our diploma and for our graduates, like we've kind of, when we think about the portrait of a graduate work, we've really, you know, worked really hard on the college kind of readiness side, but, you know, and we've been working the past couple of years on the career development piece, but that, you know, it needs more work, it needs deeper work, and we're, we remain committed to that. The recent grant that we've been awarded of $450,000, part of that is a full-time person to coordinate internships and the course offerings for our students that, you know, we have through this, Blackstone Valley Excel, we're calling it BV Excel, which is just the career development pathways. But we're running up to six courses next year. Our, our high school is offering, Damian Gaudette is offering his audiovisual program, which is huge. Nobody has that. A state-of-the-art lab that we're going to be able to open up to students in Blackstone Valley. He's psyched, he put together an, I want to take the class, I mean, he put together the class description, we're going to run it in the spring. I think Tuesday night and a couple of Saturdays for kids across Blackstone Valley. We've, we've had conversations, and we'll be hiring somebody through this grant that is going to be working with our students to place them in internships. Our senior internship model is, you know, it's fine, way too late, way too late. These kids are doing it this, like, last quarter of their senior year, those kids are, those students have already decided what they're going to be doing, moving forward. These students need these opportunities, you know, sophomore, junior year, before they make commitments to things. So, you know, I'm really glad that we, we were so aggressive in going after that grant and were awarded that, because I do think it's going to be a game changer for the, for our students. So we're, we are in the process of scheduling those classes for, and we've got two seats in all of the six offerings to start, and see where that goes for next year. And it does address the issue, one of the scheduling challenges, which is, I would love to take a manufacturing course, but my schedule can't fit it during the day. Like I, right, I'm in, I'm in band, or I'm taking AP literature, or there's something else that's in, like, that's taking that course, or I have to, we have a new phys ed requirement, I have to take another phys ed class.
If they're taking AP literature, they can give that one up. Very important.
But this gives them an opportunity, and it's a credit-bearing course. So not only do they get to take that class, but they actually will get the credit for it, you know, in our, in our ASME system, which is, which is great. So a lot of work remains to, to happen in that area, but we're like really excited about Any questions on the fiscal goal? Our student learning goal. Okay, so this was an interesting one, as it usually is, because this is the, I think, the most important thing to measure, but can be the hardest, because everything is impacting that, right? Which, which I get. So, but I think the, the committee knows that this was so important that although we, you know, we had some kind of an abridged MCAS, we still don't have any results yet, which is fine, it was really important to us. If we were truly leaning into the work and doing the work through this pandemic year, we had to have this. I knew early on that I, there would, as there usually is, there are places where we'll meet it, and, you know, we haven't met it everywhere any year yet, but that doesn't mean that we stop trying. And so I just want to talk a little bit about how the data is set up, because there's a lot of data in your packet. And again, that was intentional. What I wanted to do was to be able to look at, you know, the beginning of year, which we started late, we started September 16th, but I, I'm very pleased that we had all of our PK through grade three students back that, you know, opted for that, even at that point. And then our, obviously, the hybrid model, grades four and up. But as the committee is aware, after we did the mid-year testing, which was in February, we were bringing all the students back. And so we wanted to parse the data out, so we could see like, well, was there a significant difference? And, you know, while there's a lot that we can talk about, and I'm, and I'm happy to delve into any of this data that the committee wants to, I do think it's important, and Jane and I, you and I were processing this already, but I do think it's important to note, if one piece of data jumps out at us more than any of it, only the middle school students need to be in-school, in-person, every day. You know?
And even to the point, I mean, it's like, it just, you know, it so stands out, and even to the point of, I started thinking this afternoon, like, what can we do even to get sixth graders back by themselves, like an or, you know, like the high school does with freshmen, and a day or an orientation or a week early, you know, whatever, but just to, to... There are more and more and more mental health issues every day with kids. We hear about it more and more, it's, it's out there, it's in the news, it's in the news, you know, it, it, social media, whatever, you're hearing more and more about it, but it's really coming to light in the middle school, like in middle school age. And, you know, some of the crises that we really faced this year were in the middle school.
That is correct.
A lot of the family issues seem to erupt, you know, there's issues everywhere, don't get me wrong, mental health everywhere. But it's, it's like, that seemed to be such, the, the pressure of fitting in and the pressure of, of, you know, changing in your, your life status from a child to a teen, and, and all of the angst and all the issues that go with that, when these students didn't have supports there, you can see it, it impacted not just their daily lives and their, their mental health, but their academic life, I mean, they really struggled, they really struggled. And, and schools, where we will, where we will never replace parents, have become the support systems for so many kids, and it's not there. We're doing a disservice. So I don't know what we can do, but I did, I did make lots of notes that we need to do something, because...
And you can see it in the growth, you know, just, if you look at just the middle to end of year, and that, that's what we're presenting, because that's when all the students returned, so that was when we had the full return, so you can see it. Grade six and seven, I mean, that is, there is a significant difference between them in second, third, I know fourth grade was, was not strong, they were, you know, on the lower moderate end. Fifth grade was over the hump, eighth grade was over the hump, but you can see it. So that, you know, there's, so when we talk about, you know, that Acceleration Academy, getting the kids back the week before school starts, the full remote students, but also we talk about like the, the ramp-up summer program that we're doing at the middle school, to any parent that's paying, you know, that, that's watching this, by all means, if you want your student to participate in any of these things, just let us know, email me directly, it's fine, we'll, we'll make sure that your, your child gets on our list. But, I mean, you can see the growth, this is student growth. So you can see the grade six and seven, and this is nationally normed, so the kids, I mean, this is compared to all the other sixth graders that took STAR, they grew in the 37th percentile. So that's, that's really low, in terms of the progress that, that was made in grade six and seven ELA. Math, you can see we had some, some strong areas, but we also had some gaps. You can see that it was not as significant in terms of student growth at the middle school level. Seventh grade actually showed some nice growth from the middle to end of year. But you can see the target was 50, I mean, that was the goal that, you know, the overall goal that's set for that. Second grade showed some nice growth, grades three and four struggled, grade five had some nice growth, grade six and, I'm sorry, grade seven and eight. The high school scheduling made this, I will say, almost impossible, because of the block scheduling. You had the beginning, and then you had the end, and then you had a beginning, and then you had the end, and depending on when the student took math or ELA, really skewed the numbers. So it's, it's, I put it out there, but where we could, but you couldn't do the growth with block scheduling for freshmen for that, it was just, the numbers were too small. Our special education data remains a struggle, and, you know, Jill and I and the principals and Matt, we've had so many conversations, as a matter of fact, we spent a huge chunk of time recently just talking about this data. And again, you know, this is just the middle to end of year, and it's a little misleading, because if you, in some grade levels, if you lay over the beginning to middle, you can actually see some growth from the beginning to end.
If you do this to this, that's what I did.
Yeah, that's right. And you have to do that diagonal kind of...
Then you, then you see quite a bit, actually, but...
You can see some progress.
The ninth graders, they were... So were these students tested here primarily in-person all year long?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. So, still like everybody else, hit miss.
Do you have a, same group of kids, because you're not going to be...
Right.
One of the things Jill is putting together, which we'll have, we'll have a very public conversation about, which I think is going to be really powerful, is special ed is not a destination, right? Like, the goal isn't to have a student there forever, right? The goal is that if we're doing what we're supposed to, effectively, we, you can actually transition a student out. So what we're going to be doing is looking at those number of students that we transitioned out, Jill's doing an analysis now, and it's a good problem, but we're transitioning out students that met or exceeded expectations, and we're transitioning in those that are not meeting, which kind of makes sense. So we have to actually delve into the specific number of students, which we're in the process of doing that now.
Is there such a small number in each cohort?
Well, that does, that hurts too, right.
Do you have more room and room, creating more red...
Right.
Doesn't it just sort of...
So we're looking at that. And I think the way we talk about the results moving forward will change, because not only will it be this data, but it will be, oh yeah, and when we did the beginning of year testing, here's where the students were, and we transitioned out 10 kids by the end of the year.
Yeah, that would be good.
And transitioned in, you know, six kids. So that will give, I think, a more accurate picture of student, of the student performance in this area, because this remains a major focus of our student group.
But whatever's happened in the ninth grade is kicking some butt.
And then our ELA data, again, or partially, and not meeting. And I certainly don't want to sit and read all these numbers to everybody. And then math are exceeding, and again, you can see where the progress was made, but to get a true picture, you got to lay that, that beginning to middle of year data... But to get a true picture, you gotta lay that, that beginning to middle of year data over.
Also need to know, and there's no way to know, did they move, like, so if there was 37% in partially meeting, but did they move up to meeting, or did they move down? Like, you don't know which way they went.
Right. With the size of the numbers, we can actually track the specific students. So we would be able to, again, so as we kind of think about how we want to talk about the data and look at the data moving forward, that might be a way we do that, Jane. So that you can see the specific changes, not student names, but I mean.
Well, no, but, you know.
Number of students. And then same with our math, it'll, to end for not meeting. And I think this is where there is significant urgency in terms of our students with special needs and their math results. One of the things we.
You mean, you mean yikes?
Yes. One of the things that we are discussing with the math curriculum team is making sure that, you know, whatever direction, and next year we'll be looking at actually different materials and programs and resources, but we need to have those interventions and scaffolds built right into, into that. One of the things that we pulled apart at the middle of year, Jill and I with the principals and Matt and the coaches, was this idea of like, you know, it's interesting that our students in the substantially separate classrooms are actually showing some nice progress and growth. And that is, I do think, because of the actual programs and the instruction that's happening in those rooms, it's in the inclusion classrooms where the kids are struggling. And so that speaks to looking at the core materials and resources. When are students, if there is a pullout, when are they coming out of class? What are the resources and materials that are being used in that pullout? Because if it's not a modified version of the actual current standards and skills, then what is it? Because you're going to inevitably create a bigger gap for that student if you're taking them out of their core instruction for remedial instruction. It's exactly what we're talking about, that we can't do moving forward, particularly with the gaps that have been created this year. So I know that that's the next level of work that Jill is working on. And a huge help will be having a coach in each building, which we do. We have our two new coaches on board, one's from in district, which we're really excited about. So three of the four coaches are our teachers. And then another, we actually recruited from Ohio, that is moving out here to be with her children. And she's an early childhood expert, so huge, huge win for us in both areas. So Jill will be able to work with those four coaches on this exact issue, as we're working with the math committee, to look at the core curriculum that will help our students better access the, like, just in time, learning that they're doing. But please know that this is definitely a 911 for us, is where, with our planning moving forward. And then again, the aggregate data, all students are meeting and exceeding. There were a few places, the goal was at least 55%. So there were a few places that we met that goal. In some places, we were within striking distance, you know, grade three and grade nine, we were close. Again, not anywhere near where we want to be. We just had a conversation recently today about looking at, you know, 50% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations is not anywhere near where we should be. And I, I am, again, I'm proud of the team, because we're having these conversations after the year we had. We're staying focused on the work, like, we're not making excuses for it. I have not heard our leadership team once say, yeah, but COVID this or COVID that, or I have not, not one person has said that. Nobody, they've been saying, okay, how do we double down on this and get this done?
But this is where you really see sixth and seventh grade, like, this is where you see, holy crap.
Yep. We have really strong sixth grade teams.
Yeah.
So that really shows the need of, and the impact of this, you know, of this year on that.
Particularly on that transition year.
Absolutely. And are not meeting, or partially are not meeting numbers. And math. And we know, I mean, this, we're working on this, and it's not, programs don't teach students, so I'm certainly wouldn't, I'm not blaming a program for anything. And the recommendation may come to the committee that we don't get a new program, so I'm not by any means saying that that's the core problem, that, that's, these are, you know, zero excuses here. But you can see that. There's some big concerns when you have, you know, less than half, a third, a quarter of students at grade level in math at the end of the year. Please.
Do we have any sections that are co-taught? I think I ask this every year.
Do we have any co-teacher, co-teaching models?
Right, that's right. I've already forgotten. I mean, because if we're seeing progress when they're pulled, in the pullout, and we're not seeing it in the inclusive setting, then wouldn't that further indicate that we should explore a co-teaching model, if possible?
It could, but it could also mean that our name of curriculum is just very standard, and what we're doing for our special ed kids could be non-specialized. It could be just making it, do you know what I mean? Just like, we can do something different so they can access it. So I think the big thing is the ongoing communication. One of our goals is to make sure that our special ed teachers are communicating with our regular teachers on a regular basis, and communicating with our parent professionals, to make sure that what the kids need to maintain access and progress with the curriculum in the classroom is going to be in that chair. It could be a combination of the inclusion or the classification, it could be some co-teaching going off. It's all going to kind of be fine, is happening now. I don't want to say it's a quick fix, so just put a special ed teacher in the class.
Right.
You know what I mean? If the issue is still there, it doesn't matter, it could be put in the class.
Right.
Absolutely looking at all of those.
And if, and if the people teaching don't learn to differentiate the t- you know, it's like when you're trying to, you know, you know somebody doesn't understand you, so you just talk a lot louder. Well, that, they still not going to understand, you know, it's still not gonna, if you, if you can't differentiate and you don't develop the materials, then you're just talking louder.
Thank you.
And then again, the not meeting numbers for math, middle to end of year. And the only other piece of our, and it's a large piece, I shouldn't say the only other piece, but there are survey results, so I just want to just hit some quick numbers and explain some next steps with that, because there is data that you don't have yet. Each one of the surveys came with open-ended questions. To print each of those, it was 211 pages, so that's like a whole dissertation in itself. So what I thought we would do is just email them to you, like a CSV, and you can just manipulate and scroll through them, if that's okay, so that you didn't have another binder on top of the binder. So, but just a couple of things to highlight with the numbers. We had 866 students take the survey. These are just participation numbers, 130 staff, 500, I believe it was 23 families, six administrators, and then we did something different this year, we called 200 families. We literally just randomized homeroom lists and we just called them and saw, we'd get somebody on the phone to talk to us. And we put, most of that dialogue was open-ended. So you'll, you'll see the information that parents shared when I send the, I'll have Catherine send it tomorrow, or I'll send it tomorrow, the actual file. But of the 200 families we called, we got 56, so it's about 25%, which isn't bad, as far as like survey participation. I think, you know, a couple of data points that are important to look at. When we asked the question on the, the emailed survey that went to families that about 500 answered, you know, is the district making progress? There was much progress, some progress, no progress. 5% of our community said we're making no progress on our goals. 95% said we are making some level of progress, either some or much. And that was, 40% said much progress, which is almost half, and 53, 55% said some progress. I would encourage those 5% of parents that said none to reach out to me, so we can have a conversation about that. I'd like to know what we could do different to help support that work. And we did ask that question, you know, is there something you want to see us focus on? That was one of the questions, that you'll see the open-ended response. A lot of the feedback we got in that area was get everything back to normal, please. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of feedback around that area. But I was pleased that at least 95% said you're making some level of progress towards your goals. Now, when we called families and we asked the families, you know, do you feel the district is making progress toward their goals? About, I mean, I'm rounding the numbers, but it was about 55, 60% said yes, and 40% said what goals? So that was a head scratcher, and I need to think about, how do we figure out a way to? Because we're super goal-driven, so I'm thinking like, how can I do this different?
Even not calling, 38% didn't, not, didn't know you had goal, you know, it's like, where, how are we missing people? How are we missing them? Are they choosing not to be? Like, are they, I almost feel like it's an act of choice. If, if you're saying you don't know what the goals are, is it important for you, is it important for you to know what they are? And have you looked? Because I can't think, in our communities, I can't think of any other way to reach people. I mean, you're doing email, you're doing newsletters, you're doing Facebook Live, you're, we're on the television, we're.
I think we've talked about it before, but, I mean, when you're a parent, you're very much like, my kid goes to this school. Yes, I'm part of the district, and I want, and like, I'll tune in when it comes to the budget.
Right.
You know, but I think maybe if, like, when there were, was a school update, or school, school-specific goals at the beginning of the year, and then like embed it within, I don't know.
There's always some families with those barriers that they, that they can't get past.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know Tara gave some helpful feedback too, in that, you know, sometimes, I think you were saying to Sarah, like, my kid's in fourth grade, and I'm focused on that teacher and that classroom, and like, that's, I kind of just live in that space, like, which makes sense. Right, so I get that.
Especially if you have other stuff going on, or you're just like, all right, get through this.
Kind of tunnel vision.
Well, I think it's the, the dad or whatever who said to you, okay, here's another update, phooop!
Yep, and he doesn't read them anymore. Yeah, then there was that. I don't want that to happen either.
Unfortunately, I feel like a lot of that this year was just the COVID stuff, you know.
Right.
So maybe you did miss the actual curriculum comment versus another COVID case, you know, like.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but hopefully we can get away from that.
Definitely. And then the last survey, which I included, was from the leadership team. And I thought that was important, because that was a direct reflection, an anonymous reflection from them to my leadership. And I do like to share that information, because I think it's important. I think, you know, we opened with this conversation about the team owning the work at every level, and I think that that level of feedback is important. And, you know, I do think that. You know, I'm not going to get some of the results without getting other results, right? So like, yep, there's a good vision, there's a focus, we're driving the work, get out of the weeds. I don't know how to do both, right? So it's, there is some of that, but I, I do take that feedback to heart too, and think about how to work with that. Any other thoughts or questions on the evidence?
So just, so, well, Amanda's not here, but Tim, new folks, so what happens next? And I'll let Erin probably talk a little bit more about this, is Erin will send us some form of recording our thoughts and, and evaluation, kind of checklist, scoring sheet, if you will. And we will need to get that back to her well in advance of our next meeting, because at our, our next meeting, we will review it. Unfortunately for the superintendent, his evaluation is done publicly, and so we'll give that feedback publicly. So Erin, and it, you know, it comes as feedback from a committee, so it doesn't say, you know, Sarah said you should make your presentations last an hour instead of an hour and 15 minutes.
I would never say such a thing. I love these meetings.
But, you know, so it comes as a committee, but you still need to provide it to Erin. And then we will evaluate in general. And then we go into a executive session to negotiate the future. And then we do come back and report that to the public, because again, it's a very public process. But I don't, is there more that you want to, there's a lot more you want to say.
I have a few notes that I'd like to share.
Oh, good lord.
So first, I just want to say, and I know that I'll speak for more than myself, but I appreciate, Jason, all of your effort to put this together for us. But I do want to point out to the committee that this is barely a snapshot of the work that is done on a daily basis. This is what's geared towards the goals that, you know, we did put forth for him this year. And then with it being an unprecedented year, I don't think we'll ever know the guts of all of the daily work, even though he has this huge binder for us with, with all of his evidence for, for what, you know, we wanted him to work on. So I, I just, I want to thank you, Jason, for doing that. And for being able to get this done in the year that we had. Because though no one is blaming any, anything on COVID, it was, it was still, as you've already pointed out, you appreciate being here, we appreciate you being here. But there are a lot of educators, administrators, superintendents that have walked away from their jobs this year because of the year that it was, so I think, again, everything in here is based on his goals. We cannot forget the daily work that was done that we may, again, never even know what that, what all of that was. I just want to make sure everyone takes the time and does the due diligence to go through this binder. It was not something you had to go through by tonight, this, this takes time, it took Jason time to put together. I will send out the rubric probably tomorrow morning, but I would like to open the door for anyone, but mostly for Tim, Amanda, and Carrie. I would like to set aside some time to meet with you separately, if you want to, and, or any, any other member. I would prefer a Google Hangout, just so we can do it at the most convenient time for, that works for all of us, or individually when we're doing it. Just to go through how we get to the goals, what, what we're really looking for in the rubric, you know, and then if you have any questions on individual things, I obviously don't want to give you my opinion on, on things, but I want to make sure you understand what you're looking at here, because there is a lot of work. So preferably Friday or Saturday, if, and I'll email each of you to see if there's a time that works. But I want to make sure that you know I have that time set aside for any of you. That, that way we can have it back by the July 12th or 13th.
July 12th.
July 12th meeting, so we can present it back to him.
Is it going to be similar to the one that we did with Wendy?
That's the same, we, we have to use that rubric, so.
I mean, like, the.
Oh, her, Erin going over with people?
Yeah.
Oh, no, if, you mean, if you want to meet with me to?
I need to go. Should I go?
I don't think I'm as well-versed as Wendy with the way she present, presented to us that workshop we had.
Well, I was just, because it was really helpful to me.
Yeah.
Because I went into it thinking, yeah, I know how to give an evaluation, right? But when I came out of it, I, I really had a better understanding of how the evid- you use the evidence to support your comments.
And Carrie, you did charting the course, and they covered, yeah. Tim, have you done charting the course yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so they, they covered evaluation.
They did loosely.
Yeah. Well, we used the, the newer.
Yeah.
Model format.
I hope that's the one they're covering.
Well, I don't know, you know, it was a pilot, and then pilot froze, so I, I don't know. But I assume we're still moving forward. I don't, I don't know if Amanda has attended, so probably is really important to, but I don't know when she's back either.
I will catch up with her. And that's all I wanted to say about it, I, I just, so I will send it out, and you can certainly work through it on your own time, but. Um, but any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me. And of course, Jason too, I'm sure he would answer any...
Of course, yeah.
Questions about the evidence, so.
He'd be happy to.
Anybody have any general questions about that? All right. And that's your report. Woo-hoo, okay. Uh, any school committee members have issues they'd like to address now or put on a future agenda? Erin, you look like you...
You look like you're ready to.
Yeah, you look like you had some.
I have a few notes, again, but it was actually just things that came up, well, um... You mentioned recognizing students and staff a few times through tonight, so I, there were things that, um, I had made a few notes on, just, I think, walking through these last few months with my seniors, um, and not have, I mean, being here for many years, but not actually, like, walking that, that journey until now. A few things about recognizing students. So, uh, at graduation, when they're announced, they are called by their name of choice. Um, and then it's typically pointed out if they were student council, National Honor Society, honors, high honors. So I just wonder, and I, a lot of, do we call them cords or ropes here? The cords?
I call them cords, but I don't know what.
Um, it would be up to us as a school to have different cords for different things they're recognized for. So I wondered why, why we don't have them for honors or high honors. We do have, we have student council. National Honor Society has the SASH, but they apparently only keep them if they buy them? And, you know, just seeing, because I have a lot of, obviously, parents that are friends in, in other schools, and I'm seeing a lot of different things out there that I'm noticing more where they're personalized. It has like class of the year. So I'm just wondering, you know, why, for recognition purposes for our kids that have worked for those types of, um, recognition, why we don't do more for them in that sense? Because it really does come down to a few minutes of being announced, but I don't think I realized the, you know, how proud they are to wear those until, until this year for me. Um, I mean, and I, I think we could even go as far as saying our pathways programs could be recognized. Our top 10, we, we have them stand up at an award night, but they're, besides that, you know, why isn't there a cord for that? Or, and I'm not, I think some of the bigger schools do top 50, but maybe our class sizes aren't big enough to do that high, but we already recognize the top 10, so why aren't we putting something around their neck for, I mean, they, they just, they deserve that.
Maybe we could encourage, um, even Jill, the new, not this Jill, the new principal, just to look at what other places do, because I do know one parent spoke to me and said, you know, some people are already wearing certain or should be wearing certain recognition, then why are you saying it too? Because you say 12 things about, um, you know, my child who walks across the stage, and you say nothing about, you know, Jill's other than their name. And yes, they've earned those things, but you show that they've earned those things by, you know, kind of what they wear, you know, so...
So there has to be a balance, but it's still announced student council, so.
But there has to be, it has to be balanced. Like, you know, when we talk about equity, so maybe we can look at what other places are doing and how they do it, and, and so that the person walking across the stage feels that honor of everything they've put their effort into.
And there's so much more, like, so, sports. So my son walked across with no, nothing else announced, but he had a lot of, of achievements through high school. So why does that compare, why doesn't that compare to student council? With, with, you know, and I'm sure there's reason behind it, I'm, and I'm not looking for like, a cord for every, a color for every sport, but I'm just saying, Jane, equity and...
Right, right, that's, yeah.
If there's a cord, I don't think we shouldn't announce it, uh, but it's usually, um, also notated on the program.
Well, that's where it usually is, that's where it usually is.
But those are typically announced at our graduation, so, um, the only other thing I wondered too was Abigail Adams. Typically, we have, um, those students who are announced. I, do we have a, an update on Abigail Adams, Jason, based on this year's sophomores that were freshmen last year and did not take a science MCAS? That's typically part of achieving that.
I have to think back because we offered, we had, we had, I believe, over 20 students take it, but I think, I think those were juniors. I have to go back and look. I think, I have to go back and look. I, they, they may have been freshmen that needed to, let me check, let me check on that, because I...
I just wonder where it stands, I mean, so...
We did give another bio test, and we had over 20 students take it, but I don't remember if they were sophomores.
No, I, I don't feel like it was ever offered to them this year. They, they were given the waiver last year, so, but where does that, but with that being said...
I'll, I'll look, yeah.
The requirements for Abigail Adams were only good through this year's class.
But I know we, I know we gave it in the spring, and I know that we had over 20 kids come in and take it. I'm positive, I'm absolutely positive, and I know that this had something to do with it.
Yeah.
I just don't remember what grade it was, it might have been 11th grade for some reason.
Because they didn't take it last year.
Yeah, so let me, let me look into that, I can definitely find that out.
Um, and then something else you said for, you, you were talking about, I think, pathways, taking them after hours, but they'd still have credit.
Yes.
Um, and this is something you can definitely get back to us on, but I... We have an opportunity in our middle school for our eighth graders to take Spanish 1. It was, it is usually told to the kids, it counts as your, so it does count as their Spanish 1. They don't get, so it doesn't count towards their 24 credits needed to graduate. And they're being told from high school guidance that it doesn't count towards their, to their two foreign language credits, so they're being encouraged to take a Spanish 3. Um, and for some kids, I'm sure they want to do that, but where does it really stand? And you can get back to us because I feel like there's a little bit of miscommunication or misunderstanding from eighth grade to when they reach high school, um, even in, even in our kids that have gone to Valley Tech. I believe they get there and they think they have the credit, um...
Is the question, Erin, just so I understand it correctly, I want to make sure to look into the right thing.
Is it, is it a high school credit if it took an eighth grade here?
If they take Spanish 1 in eighth grade.
Is it a credit?
Is it a high school credit?
All right.
Do they have, get to take Algebra 1 in eighth grade?
Yes, that is also...
And is that a high school credit?
No, it falls under the same category as Spanish 1, right?
So they still take four maths in high school?
Right, yeah.
They, in their senior year, they're not like, oh, I don't need math this year because I took Al-, so...
They just get to start high school at Algebra 2 instead of Algebra 1.
So it, what kind of, is the same question?
Do we offer a seal of bilinguacy?
No. We don't, you know, we don't have the, um, we don't have all the coursework.
We don't have a Spanish 4 or whatever.
And that was all my notes, Sarah.
Yes, I wonder if like, high schools, that include eighth grade in high school, do they count?
Right, so if they take that in eighth grade?
If they take what? Like, if the eighth grade is at the high school, does that count towards their credits?
Their high school requirement.
That's a, yeah, like, like an ex-bridge or something, or bellingham, yeah, that's a great question.
So maybe.
I'll look into that.
And if we, um, especially the algebra, I know that it's usually full here. I, I would really love to look at offering that to more kids in eighth grade. Because... We're usually full, so we don't have, we, we say, I believe it's usually 30 kids, sorry, we have no more room, and... I, I just, I think there could be another, if, if we're offering that as the high school credit...
We should run as many sections as we need.
Yeah, why aren't we running it and letting, okay, you're not in the top 30 in your math class if you, if you, you know, feeling like you didn't get into it, but they're going to take it anyway? Why aren't we running that level for them?
Anyone else?
I, I have a question, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, for those students that did not meet the, uh, and looking back to the results of, and, and statistics that did not meet the, the criteria for the mandated test, is there some type of credit recovery or tutoring or something available over the summer to help those kids get to grade level?
Absolutely. Uh, so we have two different options. Uh, we actually have a credit recovery, um, option. So the kids can actually, with teacher support, can take an online, it's through Edgisher, is the platform, um, but with the teacher, working with the student through the platform. But then we also have, um, for kids that would prefer something different, a project-based learning option.
Okay. With that, is there a differentiation between male and female students?
In other words, who opts for which?
Uh, no, as far as, uh...
How many more have to do it?
Which ones, was it, were there more female students or more male students that did not meet grade level?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a methodology that we can address now so that we meet that next year head-on and not be in the same situation?
Oh, I can tell you unequivocally, it's boys. It, the boys, it, if you look at our success rate academically, the girls are faring stronger than, than the boys. That, and that's an issue that we've been working with the leadership team around for the past couple of years. Absolutely. It's a, and it's, it's a culture issue with a small c that we're, like, we're addressing. Yeah.
So the, the question comes back in, how do we address that subsection of our students so that we can make learning fun and cool?
So, the, that's a great question. The summer, that was why we did the two pathways for the summer.
Mm-hmm.
You could do the online course with a teacher's support, or you could do the project-based learning hands-on. Here are the three skills you're going to focus on over the three weeks of the program. So we put both pathways out to see, I haven't looked at the data yet, to see who signed up for which one. And I'm curious to see, because I don't know, I don't know which students, and that's kind of a learning style thing, but it would be interesting to see if there is a pattern there. Did more boys pick this over this, or more girls pick that over that, I don't know, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we can look at that.
I was just going to, um, repeat, um, my elementary school PTO, um, info, just that reminder that we are merging. Um, I'm not sure that everyone in the community knows that the schools are merging grade levels yet. Hopefully, families who have children these ages do. But, um, the PTO, um, I'm looking forward to it, I am actually, I joined, I'm an officer. Um, there's only three of us this year, but, um, hopefully people, parents will volunteer because it's going to be a lot, I think, you know, with the two buildings, but, um, I think it'll be great. So, looking forward to it.
Three from two buildings worth of merging?
Yeah, it's, it's awfully sad that there aren't many yet, but maybe once people, well, yeah, get acronyms.
Hear more about it, yeah.
And the lack of activities for them to participate in this year was probably not helpful.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Stay positive and hope that will, um, and even if it's not members or officers, it's volunteers.
Do you, do you know, um, how the summer camp filled up for them? That was a, did the...
Which one?
The one we approved, is it full?
Oh, I don't, I, that's the one, I don't have the numbers on, I can tell you every other group.
One week was full, and they said, I think they had just a few openings in the second week.
That's good.
Yeah.
Great, great.
You should be standing at pickup and drop-off for that, soliciting.
Well, and, and clearly the message will go out a million times, but remote is done. There's no, like, it's back to school and back to business, and I'm sure we'll have guidelines attached to that, but back to business. Turn off your Chromebook at home. Get outside, read, read, go get your book, we gave you a hard copy of the book, read it. All right, anyone else? Entertainer, uh, next meeting, uh, July 12th. Um, I will be remotely attending, no more remote, but I'll be remotely attending.
No, it's a Monday.
That is a Monday, because we, we usually do that one, um, so that we can get in before the 15th to do all the things we need to do to technically close the books, even though they don't close, but, um, and so Erin will be chairing that meeting, and I'll be in a nice little...
You want me to prop you up on your spot?
No, no.
I'm going to put your name badge in front of it.
You can hear me when I scream. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Anything else?
Hi, okay.
So I don't know, I miss that date somehow, I, I'm not sure.